You're live.
Good evening, everyone. This is the city council workshop. Today is Wednesday, October 15. On the table we have Councillor Leonard, Councillor Beck, Councillor Mallard, Councillor Fish, Councillor Hawes, Councillor Turnbull. First up on the agenda is Advisory Committee on Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Human Rights: Recommended Resolves.
Would you like to know how we got here?
Yes.
This came before the GovOps meeting, the last meeting we had, and there was a lot of discussion. There still were a lot of questions. People were leaning to some way or something, and there was no clear cut where it appeared to be going. So I asked if we could do a workshop to, once again, meet, talk about the revise that they gave us at the GovOps meeting, and hopefully more councillors would be there than what were there at that meeting, because I felt it needed to have more vetting of councillors' opinions. So they said, yes, we could, and here we are. And I do see the two people from the committee are here as well. If you want to proceed with that, they can come up and start again.
Well, we start there.
Okay.
Katie and Shane Boys.
Water bottles.
Thank you.
You just got comfortable later.
We got set up.
We timed this.
So if you guys want to introduce yourselves and evolve.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, councillors. My name is Katie Bryden, and I'm the Chair of the Advisory Committee for Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Human Rights.
And I'm Shane Boys. I'm the Vice Chair.
Yeah.
So I know Councillor Turnbull wasn't here and Councillor Leonard wasn't here. So why don't we start?
A little history?
Yeah.
Sure, of course. So this came to our attention actually quite a few months ago from members of the community who were actually seeking to prohibit this put in writing, the prohibition of the city to enter into a 287G agreement, which would enact, make it so that the city of Bangor would never, or the police department, excuse me, would never participate with ICE specifically. And that just ICE, not any of the other Homeland Security, or FBI, or any of the other federal agencies. So specific to ICE, and specific to making sure that we have clear language to our citizens about Bangor's commitment to making sure that we're not going to go out of our way to enter into any agreement that's going to make people feel like they need to be unsafe or be targeted, because that's what we had been seeing happening around the country, actually happening here in Bangor at the Colby Restaurant. And so when that happened earlier this spring, we were asked, can the city do something to make sure that our citizens that are living here, where 287 or ICE coming in has shown to target individuals that maybe have brown skin, don't look like they're from here. There's a lot of racial profiling happening around the country. What's Bangor doing? And what can we do? So we put together this resolution that we wanted to present that said, you know, Bangor will never enter into a 287G agreement. And that was a lot. There was a lot in that, in that resolution. And so we had several meetings with our Chief of Police, with our City Solicitor, with our City Manager, to really identify what Bangor needs, what it needs to say, so that folks feel safe and seen and comfortable here, and what we can do to reassure everyone that everyone in a leadership position in the city wants what's best for everyone living here. And so after many drafts, we came back to tonight's resolve, which is not a resolution, a resolve, which clearly states the procedure in which, if any federal agency were to ever come to Bangor and say, you know, we want to enter into an agreement with you, what that procedure looks like. And it's nothing new. It's literally outlining what's already on the books, just because our committee and all the work that we've been doing, all the conversations that we've been having, and the research and the data analytics, we didn't even know what the process was. And so we thought putting something on paper that could be stated freely and say, this is what we're doing. This isn't a decision made in a vacuum. You know, our police officers are never going to do anything that jeopardizes the safety or well-being of any of our community members. And if we did, this is what the process would be. And that is what tonight's resolve says, that what we want to do as citizens, you know, or rather, what the resolve says, that the city of Bangor cares about the folks here. There's a clear process. This is the process, really just outlining the transparency and safety for everyone. And so this is the, I guess, most final version after several conversations. Did I miss anything, Shane?
No, I think just to make very clear, it does not say that we will not. It does not prohibit a city. We had talked after the initial draft about how we can't necessarily bind a future council to something. So we took that language out, rolled it back, and instead just focused on what support we already have and what things we're already doing, but putting it in writing so that the city can put it forward. People can read it and know what the process is. Even if, I think, you know, if I were scared that ICE could come and target me, it would make me feel at least a little bit better to know what that process might look like before it actually happened, right? Like that that decision will not be made behind closed doors. It'll be made in a public session. It'll be made by people that we know and trust, like our Chief of Police and our City Manager. So I think just providing more information in this case is helpful. And I know there was some discussion last time about, you know, do we need a resolve for this? Because then we'll have to do a resolve for everything. And I said last time, I do think that it is really, really important that we, as the people who are helping connect people to information in the city, make that information really accessible. And I think that this resolve is a great step in doing that. And honestly, I would love to see it with some of the more obscure city policies, just a little bit more of an explanation for folks that makes it easier for them to, to read and understand. So that's, that's what we've brought to you tonight.
Questions, comments? Councillor Fish.
Thank you. I know that you've put a lot of work into it, and you've tried to come back with something that basically reiterates what we already have, so that it's clearer and easier to find for those that have concerns and fears. And as I said before, I just, I'm against the resolve because I feel it's already in our charter. I've gone through, we have Code of Ethics in charters with, which explicitly explain where we are as a city, what our policies are, what we stand for, and they're written, written clearly out there. We did have our police department speak with us. It really hasn't been a problem. Yes, they've been in Colby. I do understand that there's fear out there. But I think a lot of, you know, depending upon the nature of the topic, there's different segments of our community that are fierce about different things. And depending upon the political climate, it's an ongoing thing. And I just think that our job as council is to, is to look at, you know, we have 32,500 residents, and we spent all of this time, and we're going to start doing resolves so that, you know, if you're going to have a building permit, so that that's easy to find, because it's hard to find. And, you know, we have a lot of other people too that, because of the times, are struggling about different things and have different fears. We have taxes and insurance. I think that our, our job is to look, run the city in the best and fairest way for all and a balanced for all of the community. And for these resolves, we just had one in February, again, saying almost, you know, yes, you know, we're, in February, we had a resolve saying we're reinforcing our commitment to being a well-mended, supportive community. And again, specifically targeting some of these same people to make them know that we, we are behind them, we support them, and we're, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that they have equality and safety. And then today, we're doing the same thing, written a little differently, but still the same thing. And I just think out of all of the things we have of important issues in the business at hand, and to be fair and balanced of our time and our resources, that this is just, you know, a precedence that I don't think we should be doing, taking all this time about resolves. So that's why I'm voting against it.
Can I illustrate this in a little bit of a different way? This is kind of how I think of it in my mind. If you are in a relationship, doesn't have to be a romantic relationship, friendship, whatever, with someone else, and they only ever say, "I love you, I care about you," once, will you really feel it? That's how I feel about this. We made that resolution back in February, which we needed at the time. And I think we need it again. I think there are people in the community that are still saying, I need to feel that. I need to know that my elected officials care about me and my safety, or the safety of the people that I love. And so instead of just saying, "I love you once," that better be good enough for you. I would love for us to continue to reiterate that, so that people really feel it, especially when they need it most.
And I see what you're saying. But I also think that the more we tell that special group that we care about them, the rest of our residents who don't dare to come out and speak out because they're afraid that they're going to be criticized about speaking out against it, are saying, well, what about our veterans that are suffering with mental health? What about our elderly that don't know how they're going to pay their life bill and their fuel? What about, you know, there are so many segments, our young people that can afford an apartment? You know, we have so many people that have fears and have issues, yet we're spending, again, hours and hours into more resolves. This, so, you know, it's like, like you said, you have a family, and you can, you have five kids. One may need some more special reinforcement of your love for them, but at the same time, you have to take care of the whole family as a whole. And the city of Bangor is our family, and we have a commitment to take care of them as a whole.
Councillor Mallard.
Well, I'm inclined to agree with, with the Councillor Fish. I think we've done it once, and I don't see the necessity to do it again. We, we ignored Black History Month, but we brought this up. So, you know, I'm confused with, with a lot of things, but I just think once is enough for this. I haven't seen that many people that were affected by it that have been here saying anything. And you two have not been affected by ICE personally, have you?
No, but that's not why we serve on this committee, just to take care of ourselves.
Same question. So I, I mean, I haven't seen all the people that are, that have been affected by ICE. They complain, so I think, you know, you can, once is enough. I will be voting against.
Councillor Leonard.
See, without due respect, Wayne, but I do disagree with you. This does actually affect all of us. It affects me. It affects the people in the room. When we have individuals that don't feel safe in our community, those are laborers that don't want to live in the city. Those are people that we rely on. We are a very old state. We are a very old city. And new labor coming in is not going to be predominantly white. We need immigration. Maine is not going to survive without immigration. ICE is an immense threat to our labor force and to our economy. And so it's incredibly important to make that well-known. In fact, just because I do think this is relevant, there's a multitude of things that this organization has done just within this year. So there's a 700% increase in violence from this organization. They are consistently issuing orders that have no verifiable orders or warrants from a court system, completely ignoring due process. They're arresting U.S. citizens. They're racially profiling. They're leaving children unattended and unsecure. They're arresting immigrants going through immigration courts. They've already been accused, and I would say they are kidnapping and trafficking immigrants and citizens with no due process whatsoever. They're, they're even covering up a murder of a U.S. citizen as well. They're assaulting immigrants. They're assaulting citizens. They're assaulting journalists. They assaulted a clergy member the other day. They're even assaulting police officers now. Like, I, I have more things here that I just wrote, but honestly, it was just, this already just painted, this is us doing reassurance to make sure that we stand with our citizens for what is clearly an unhinged Gestapo organization. That's what's going on right now. And I honestly, like, I, I look at my oath as a military officer, and I find these actions completely deplorable and disgusting. They are in complete and utter violation of multiple amendments within our Constitution. We need to tell our citizens that we have their backs. We need to tell our citizens that we're going to stand by them, and we're not going to work with an organization that clearly does not have our best interests.
Thank you very much. And, and I just want to make it clear that while at a national level, this is happening, and it is very scary, we're not here to promote a national policy or, or really rehash national politics. You're exactly right. We could pick and choose a thousand different things to be afraid of right now. What we are addressing are the people that have come to our meetings and talked to us specifically at our meetings that we've had come and speak with us, that have written emails, that have shown up time again. And I think once, you know, this is here at a vote and we'll come to public comment, you'll likely hear from folks who are directly impacted. We, our committee, well, our job is to do, is a very, very focused lens, right, on people who aren't getting the support and resources that they should. And the, and what we want is not so much to just say, once again, like, we promise you're safe here. What we want is a procedure that's outlined, so it's very clear to folks. I mean, originally, we, we would have actually loved there to be, like, you know, forget feelings, like, this is not happening, right? Like, that's what we wanted. But we also recognize that you are all burdened with 32,500 people. You have a lot of things to think about. And if the least we can do is put in writing what the policy is, even if we take the word "care" and "firm" and "trust" out of it, I do think that it's something that we've been tasked with as this committee is to identify those areas that really simply we can just, excuse me, put in writing what it is that's going to ensure the policies of Bangor and show how things work and operate in a way that just makes us all clearer on that.
This, because I think we're talking apples and oranges when we're comparing the previous resolve and this one. The previous resolve says, hey, you're welcome. This resolve says, hey, all of these things that we've promised, we're going to put in writing because that's the right thing to do. This idea that, again, I had mentioned this before about, you know, well, what about a resolve for this or that? And, and I'll say it again. If 8% of Bangor is awake at night because they're afraid they don't know how to get a selling permit, I'll write their order into myself. I'll write the resolve myself. So I'm definitely in favor of this, and I think it's, we're spending more time talking ourselves out of it than we could have just voted and been done on with it already, moved on to other business, and reassure some people. So it's already in writing. I'm, I'm in favor of it. And, you know, let's, you know, reaffirm that message that we're not going to get into a 287G agreement at this time. It's not in our interest.
Councillor Dean.
Sorry to late to the meeting, but last week I stated that I was in favor of the resolve, and I haven't changed my position. So I'm still thinking this is the best for Bangor.
After any weeks before I got here, we're still the same.
As long as we didn't slip any. Promise.
I felt it was, you know, to the point without being overboard, making people feel safe in our city. I think that's very important. So that makes us stronger.
Other thoughts?
If there's no other discussion from here,
Right.
it would, we don't generally vote in a workshop.
No, we wouldn't. But there'd be a vote at tonight's meeting.
It will be on the, it will be on the agenda tonight. So the resolve that was presented at the GovOps meeting, addition two or three, whichever that means. Well, now it's on the agenda for tonight. So this was mainly, we did have a few extra councillors, and thank you for coming in. They all had access to it, so we didn't ask that it be read again. I think everybody around the table has read it, even the ones that weren't here. So I think we're good there, but I guess if that's, if there's no further discussion, does he want to speak?
I would like him to speak.
Oh, okay. Well, he didn't move when you pointed.
So close.
So.
You almost made it.
I'll start off. So I'm reading, I'm reading the resolve here. Instead of providing information to the public regarding policies, figures that prevent that we're even entering into this, or to agree with hyperinversion. Another agency. So it says it would prevent. What's the downside? What's the upside?
Well, it's a law, and 287G deputizes local law enforcement as integration enforcement officers. We've not asked for that permission, and we don't anticipate that we would be acting for that. We've had a number of meetings on this, and we've given very clear arguments that if we were that sort of operation, we could start with the City Manager's office, and I'm quite certain it would return to this committee or another committee, government office committee or another committee for other sessions. That's really, it's just that simple for us. We're not looking to repel other programs. Had we discussed at the government office meeting, if we come across an individual, we'll release contact. As a document base of challenges that were unclear, we'll call it a provocation for guidance. But do we want to deputize our officer while we're not seeking that permission?
Councillor Turnbull.
This is just needs some clarification. I read it too, but you said, the resolve says it prevents it. I don't think it does. It doesn't dispel the process to go through. It doesn't prevent, right?
Well, that's why I wanted to go get a query there.
I think there was some language.
Yeah, I think what's written on the, the agenda for today, the language is not quite right. It doesn't match what's in the actual resolve. It doesn't say that we prevent, or this is intended to prevent that. It just details the procedure for if it were to happen, here's what would happen.
Essentially, I read that in the first. We intend to lead as an independent committee to be provided that we want to issue. At that point, if there were a process, if we decided that we did want to win games, that would be pretty much the thought.
All right. Councillor Ross.
What's in front of you on the iPad is the correct version. In the agenda clip in the back, it was the older one, which was stronger verbiage, so.
Something printed out last week. I'm leaning towards voting no, only because, as Councillor Fish said, I don't want this to be snowballing and every other council meeting, this type of result coming to us. We are a welcoming city. And I understand that there's individuals who feel, for lack of a better word, out of control, because they don't know what may or may not happen. But again, that, now, we know Bangor PD, they never entered into an agreement in the past. And if something were to come, it would come back. Any other comments? Yeah, I see. I just wanted to make sure everyone else is, go ahead, Trent.
I just have a quick clarifying question. Is this procedure written down anywhere else in city documentation? My argument would be that it's not written down anywhere, so it's not real, right? This resolve puts it in writing. It doesn't commit us to doing anything. It's just adding it to the information that's available to the public. It's fine for us to sit in a meeting and say it, but how many people watch these meetings? Granted, how many people are going to actually read the resolve? But something that, you know, putting it in writing, getting it out there, that's going to get a little bit more traction than just us sitting around a table and talking about it. It's really just documenting what we say we're going to do. I don't think it's, we're not trying to push an agenda. It's just putting in writing what we've already all agreed to.
I would just say there are thousands of people who watch this all the time.
And answer to your question, whether it's in a document or not, I can't. But I have to agree that every resolve that we've ever put in place for anything has probably been discussed, voted on, read at the meeting, put in the archives. And I don't know, other than those who are actually listening, have ever gone back and, and looked at those again. So I really, I sort of err on the side of, I don't want to govern by resolve. You know, I think this is what gets things done, is the conversation. And I don't know. I'm, I'm sort of not happy about another resolve. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
And if this could be put into part of our, you know, the language or something, that would be different. But we seem to be having a lot of resolves. We, we as a council have done a lot, spent a lot of time on referrals to other committees and resolves. And I just think we need to draw a line somewhere and say, okay, now we got to get back to doing the business. And that's really where I am right now. It's not subject matter. It's.
Can I? Sorry, excuse me. And this is something that came up in our GovOps, in the GovOps conversation, which is like, where can we put it then? And I don't know that we came to a resolution on that. Because I, I agree with you. We, I, I promise you, it's not our intention, even though it seems like it, to just show up and chat at you guys over and over and over again.
We love you, but we don't want to do the full time.
But what we are looking for is, yeah, like, if, if we hear folks again and again say, like, I need this, then it is, you know, it does feel as though that's what we were tasked to do. And so we, believe me, we try to get everything but resolved through. This is what we have come down to, right? At this point, this is like the, the most, I mean, it's supposed to be the lowest hanging fruit, right? Like, this is just, we're saying it out loud. We're saying what's happening. We're giving people peace of mind. And I, I agree, you know, not, not everything is going to need that. And if it does, if there are other ways that we can share that, we promise we won't bother you with all of them. But we do feel like this right now, just given the amount of times and people and conversations that it's come up, that if this is a way that we can bring this to the conversation, then, then that's best. And if there's, you know, overnight, somebody thinks of another places can show up, then we're happy to do that, too.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
City Manager update.
Councillor Dean, do you want to not sit on a corner? I warmed it up for you.
Thought you might appreciate.
He's still brave.
Yeah.
Sure. It's like that big girl.
All right. I have a few updates for you today, the first half of which involved Jen Gunnerman. So she's just going to proactively come and join me at the table. The first item on my list is a warming sent. The first item on my list is a warming center update. Um, so you'll recall the last council meeting, um, we discussed, or at least the last committee meeting. The weeks are starting to run together for me, to be honest. Discussed, um, having us do a grant application very quickly to get out some funding to support, um, warming centers, given the unexpected, um, number of warming centers this winter that are not going to be opening. Um, that application was, uh, made public on October fourteenth. A press release went out the fifteenth and I was actually pretty pleased despite it going out on a Friday. It got some good coverage over the weekend, so that was great. The applications are due on Wednesday, October twenty second, and we will evaluate them very, very quickly. Um, and in that application, the centers must open by December first to get the funding, but we're encouraging them pretty strongly to open by November fifteenth. Um, anything to add on that, Jen?
Um, no, I think I'll just reiterate that we've gotten some really good press on it to get the word out. So we're just hoping that there's no organization that says two weeks from now, we never knew. Um, and we're also using some internal communications to know. So that organizations will know, um, that that funding is available. I've not received any questions. I've not received any. I'm very well becoming.
I'm troubled.
All right. Well, I think this is great. What's the source of the funds for this grant?
No. We're going to check, check back from DJ Jess, one time GA funding. And the idea is behind this is that GA funding can use one of these shelters. Having shelters, duty administrative piece of GA is huge for it. And so this kind of uses GA funds in alignment with what they're supposed to be used for. And then takes away that administrative burden.
Have we given any consideration to running a warming shelter ourselves? For instance, could we have used the rec department gymnasium in the evening when there's not? If many are any events going on there? Because I, I'm concerned about, we don't have that much money. If we give it to a nonprofit, a portion of it's going to go to administration. So we're not getting the full bounce for the buck. If we do it ourselves and we have a facility that's being heated anyway, we can stretch it further than we would if we give it to a nonprofit.
You know, there's been a lot of conversations, um, at my department and with city leadership on what role the city wants to take in providing shelters. I will tell you that, just a little bit of background from what we're hearing from organizations is that the money, and we include this in the application where they really have to break down their budget in terms of staffing, materials, utilities. What we're hearing from organizations that are interested in applying is that the money actually is not going to go for administrative, that it's going to go to pay the heating bill. It's going to go to provide food. It's going to go to buy the cops and the math. So I just wanted to let you know that, and you'll be able to see those budgets when they come in in terms of the city's role in running a shelter. I may be a little bold in saying that, but I think that's for city council to have a conversation on. It will take the city a lot more money than $60,000 to run a shelter. And there's pros and cons to that. And I think we'd be happy to provide information on other models that are done by other municipalities. But I think that's really a big budget question for city council to discuss.
But that goes back to the question, how successful are we going to be giving $60,000 to someone? How long are they going to be able to run a shelter?
So what we're requiring is that they run the warming filter until the end of. And while it's not a lot of funds, what organizations, what we're hearing on the ground is they're leveraging funds from other places, from other foundations, from other funding sources. They're using volunteers.
So we'll have that information before we distribute the money. Because we've given money under offer to, to people that we never got our bounce for the buck and we didn't give them the third quarter of it. And I don't think that third quarter we gave, we ever received anything back from. So I'm a little leery of giving a that small amount of money to do that bigger job. I still think we could do it better ourselves. That's just my.
Wouldn't necessarily.
So I, I, I know this is a Band-Aid for like, what is a very serious problem right now? And like, I, I, I am very supportive of this, but to, to, to Wayne's, uh, um, topic regarding operating our own, that has so many multitude of different uses that I, I, I do think we should probably have a conversation about that. Uh, I mean, I mean, we, we always have the same conversation every single year I've been on council. We always have this lead up to winter and we're biting our nails and doing nothing, basically. Like nothing innovative. We clearly need more facilities for the, uh, underprivileged and the, uh, uh, economically disadvantaged. And the, the more that they're out on the elements on their own, it's, you know, it, it, because no one cares about the moral stuff. It, it, it's more expensive. Homelessness is incredibly, incredibly expensive on the economy. And we need to have a safety net to make sure that we, uh, cover our assets, basically. Like I hate talking about this like it's a money issue, but that's the only way. Like if the morals don't get you, the money shit is, Mike tells us all the time. We, we, uh, uh, thanks for bringing this up, uh, Wayne. I, I think this should be a conversation for a future. I don't know if this would be a VED or GovOps, uh, conversation, but I, I would like to see that on a future agenda.
Yeah. And I think Jen and I, the conversations that we have had is there's a short-term emergency. And then there's how do we need to improve how we do things long-term to make sure that we don't plan ourselves in this situation again next year? I think those two conversations need to happen. We're focusing on the emergency now. And then we'll turn our attention to longer-term planning.
Counselor Dean.
I was, um, just going to respond to Counselor Mallor. I think the difference between what we do with the ARPA money and what we're doing now is an immediate need. Maybe we have real deadlines and a real problem that has to be taken care of by November fifteenth, at the very latest, December first. So I think once we allocate the money, it needs to be used then, not later. So I don't think we're going to run into it. I would hope we would not run into those issues. Because in order to receive this money, you have to have a facility, you have to have people in place. It's already going to be set up for us. So we know what's going to be done. And granted, it isn't a ton of money, but it is something. It's more than we have right now.
And I would just add, part of the application process is they have to provide a description of their staffing plan. The applicant that actually puts, that does the application is the entity that has to have control over the location. So it's not as though an, an organization can put an application and say, well, if we get the money, we'll find a place. Like they have to have that documentation. So we, we are trying to make sure that those pieces are, are already in place, um, when the money is ready.
Counselor Beck.
Um, it does sound like there's going to be a lot of volunteers involved again this year. And my concern is like the last couple of years is that, you know, the organizations ran into an emergency situation. I can remember social media blowing up, looking for volunteers at the last minute. And this person didn't show up for a shift. And, uh, you know, without any paid staff involved in this, I just, I worry about that piece of it. And to that end, uh, I mentioned at the GovOps, uh, committee, uh, and I just want to reiterate, I still think that it should be on the table for the city manager to be able to declare an emergency. Uh, so we do run into a, a spot. Um, you know, find a way to, to free up some more funds or something to have ready. You don't have to use the powers, but you know, let's be proactive. So we don't end up, you know, having to wait till, you know, the following Wednesday for us all to get back here and talk about, uh, you know, how do we get some more money to help shelter X, Y, or Z? Uh, meantime, we've got people stuck outside. So just want to throw that back out there again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, we get some good applicants and we'll move forward.
I'm sure we will. Um, the next couple of items, our next three items actually are to talk about various letters of support or, um, influence, I guess. So the first one on my list is, um, Wabanaki has asked us for a letter of support in their DHHS application to fund a peer navigator program. They receive the grant, they'll have peer navigators available, um, to folks who are visiting their, um, SSP and sort of fostering relationships, encouraging them towards certain preventative practices, referral to additional supports, um, overdose risk reduction, education. Um, those sorts of services as folks are visiting Wabanaki. Um, I think we would rec, we think those are good services to provide visitors to Wabanaki. So we would support, um, sending a letter of support for their grant application if council is in agreement.
Who's the grant?
It's main DHHS, main CDC.
Main CDC.
Yeah. And so what I would just add to that is we were, when I first saw the ARPA come up on the state website, I was like, oh, maybe we'd be interested in this. But it's actually only available for, um, SSPs. So.
Okay. That, that's where I was going. Great. Thank you. I, I don't see anyone opposed.
The next item on my list is for council to consider, um, sending a letter to our, uh, senators regarding, um, expected HUD decisions for, um, housing funding. Jen, I'll just defer to you to discuss that because it's in the weeds.
Um, so this is really concerning. Um, so as you know, we get our HUD federal funding through a collaborative application with the main COC or the main continuum of care. What was supposed to be two years of funding, the federal government has decided to only do one year of funding. That funding ends March of 2026. And a new notice of funding opportunity is going to become available. We're waiting within the next few weeks. There was a leak, um, of what that NOFO will look like. And right now, the city of Bangor, we receive some of that funding for our permanent supportive housing. So it's for people who can get a voucher to pay for their rent. They need certain requirements and they're able to have that supported. The new NOFO that they anticipated to come out will require that the application for the state not exceed any more than 30% of that budget to be in that permanent supportive housing. So if only thirty, just to give you a sense of what that looks like for the city of Bangor. So currently, at this moment, um, under the, the HUD funding that we receive, we have about 177 people receiving the voucher program in about 149 apartments, meaning there's animals and couples. If that's reduced to only 30%, that will mean we will only have 53 individuals. That means 124 people in the city of Bangor or the, where we have vouchers, um, will become homeless. They will have no way to pay for their rental. Um, that means they'll be looking for shelter. They will be looking to GA, um, and will be in a pretty desperate situation. So what we're asking for is a letter to Senator Collins and to Senator King to sort of before this notice of funding goes out, to advocate that that permanent supportive housing, um, reduction not.
I think we're all in line with that.
Is this the first step? Were you have discussions with the staff locally or are they already working on this?
There, there's a lot of conversation that's happening with the main COC directly to Collins and King of the office. Um, and other organizations that are part of the collaborative application like Pebble Street and many others, DHHS.
Great. Thank you. And so there'll be a new council here in a couple of weeks. Uh, historically, we have, we have got, um, an audience with Senator Ping, Senator Collins to talk about what, what could be going on. So I would advocate for.
I'm having issues.
You got some time in November or December. Yeah. Anything else? All right.
That's all for Jen.
She's very pleased, I'm sure. So the next item on my list is, um, so as you know, of course, you, you created the opioid fund settlement committee um, to advise council on how opioid settlement funds will be spent. Um, sort of concurrent with that, the county, um, has their own tranche of opioid settlement funds that they are choosing how to spend. And they're using a grant application process. That grant application is open and we have received, um, one, but I would anticipate it's possible that we could receive more requests for letters of support for applicants to the county opioid settlement fund. Um, my knee-jerk reaction, um, was to say, of course, we do this all the time. Um, but then I sort of paused a bit because the thought entered my mind that because we are going to have a city grant application process with our committee where many of the applicants are likely to be the same. Um, the projects are likely to be the same and applicants will probably apply to both the county and the city to fund their projects, which they certainly should do. If, um, it was the best idea to start issuing letters of support for those county applicants um, in light of the fact that the city will itself be ranking and allocating money to applicants. And our decisions about, um, where to spend that, that money might not align with the letters of support that we issued for the county. Um, that was a very convoluted and probably not all that clear concern. Um, I'm told that, of course, people have changed. Um, so there's not a great historical knowledge. Folks here might know better than I do. But I'm told that we don't believe that we did letters of support for the ARPA county applications. Um, but before I started answering folks about the opioid settlement funds, I wanted to sort of run up my counsel and get everyone else's temperature on that.
I, I don't think we did, but we did collaborate a lot with the county on some of the bigger asks.
We are also collaborating with the county.
Okay.
On me, from the opioid community. We have another meeting coming up with them soon. We were waiting to get a few more applicants from both sides, but we do plan to meet with them again.
So what I will do is for the one request we've received, as well as any additional, is I'll send the requister a note sort of explaining why and concurrently encouraging them to apply to the city for opioid, uh, opioid settlement funds once that grant application is open, which will probably be very, very soon.
Questions?
Right. Just one more thing. Airport TV screens. So, um, you may have read in the news that there's been a request made, um, from Homeland Security for airports to voluntarily display a video, um, that is of a political nature about the government shutdown. Um, the city owns TV screens in our airport. Um, they're, they generally show public service announcement type information to people at the airport. Um, most recently it had information displayed about the new Real ID requirement and enrolling in TSA pre-check. There are specific regulations in place for when the airport is required to display information um, given to us from Homeland Security or the TSA. Um, this was a voluntary request, not a mandatory request, and we have not posted that video. Um, primarily because it's not the type of content that travelers need to know to safely and efficiently navigate the airport, which is the type of information that those, um, TVs typically display.
You're troubled. Actually, I'm glad, I meant to ask about that. I'm glad it came up tonight. And I'm glad that's a position the city's taken. It's clearly not a public service announcement. It's a political ad. I'm glad that's a position we've taken.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Is that the last update?
That's all I have. Just one page.
John Ross.
Else?
I move, we're going to executive session, one MRSA, section 405, 6D. I'm over going to executive session, one M R S A, section four oh five, six D. It's A S C M E, local nine twenty-six, B I A dispatch.
Should we have a seconds? The one? Yes. How about that? Mallor? Yes. How about this? Yes.
Well. Yes.
Problems, yes. How about the doing?
Yes.